If the council would like to, or sorry, the commission would like to approve this.
Just a quick question. You talk about, I mean, obviously, truck and materials. It's renovation, so it's gonna be construction. So what type of equipment are we talking?
So, he, he actually is really more of a handyman than a contractor. And so I don't think he has a lot of larger equipment.
So maybe just a trailer and some materials?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the staff report just says that any equipment would be stored elsewhere, but he would just have his personal truck at the house. So I, I think in comparison to some of the other conditional use permits we've had for contractors, this is probably a much lighter use.
We're not gonna see, like, you know, heavy equipment, like a truck home.
No, I don't, no, I don't believe so, yeah. We just, we went back and forth about whether or not we should have him apply for the conditional use permit. And ultimately, just decided we felt like it was kind of borderline, so we wanted to bring it here for the conditional use permit.
What is the current zoning for that?
It's residential.
It's residential?
Yeah, it's residential.
Does his son live in Kaseville?
So let me, I can look up the zoning. Sorry, what was your other question?
Does his son live in Kaseville?
Sorry, I still didn't.
Does his son live in Kaseville?
I do not know.
I can tell you what I know. I overheard conversation with the phone. And mostly, what they're gonna be doing is just the paperwork and stuff there. That's basically what she's doing. But she, I heard him say, well, since you are a contractor, or like contractor, we are supposed to take these, the Conditional Use Planning Commission. But the conversation I was listening to when she's talking to him is that he's pretty much, like Melinda said, a handyman. He'll just have his stuff in his pickup. Everything's contained in his pickup. And most of his job stuff will be either delivered on-site, they got it stored shed, or, or his son has some stuff too, I guess. But it did sound like mostly just paperwork there.
His home is where the business will be located, okay.
Right.
That's fine. So, I mean, it sounds pretty cut and dry. There's not gonna be a lot of operational stuff there.
So the zoning is R-120.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you Mr. Crum?
I am.
No, you're fine. We were having some questions about your conditional use permit. If you want to come up, we do have a few questions for you.
Sure.
So, state your name, just in.
Kenneth Crum.
Thank you. We just were wondering, so you're gonna be doing mostly handyman?
Yeah.
And storing just your truck there?
All I'm really doing is keeping my truck there. I have a warehouse out by Hill Air Force Base.
Perfect, okay.
That I use. I, I just don't wanna have to mess in my garage.
Okay. That answers most of what we wanted to know.
No employees?
Okay.
Just me.
Okay.
And I'll give you all a card if you need one.
Could be useful.
Do you do electric?
I do. I do everything.
My wife was working for somebody.
I've been in general for 40 years.
Okay. That answers most of our questions on the, or answers most of my questions. Anybody else have? Any other commissioners have any questions?
No.
Okay. I think we may be ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit for Horizon Renovations at 891 South Case Drive.
Okay, do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Thank you. We have motion second. We'll start the voting with Commissioner Pecker.
Aye.
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 And it passes, well.
That was painless.
Painless. Yeah, thank you for coming. Thanks for answering a few questions. And the staff will get back with you on next step in the process.
We'll be sending out a letter notifying you the approval of the conditional use permit, and, and we'll process that business license next week. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next up on the agenda is the barn burner of the entire night, the planning commissioner training by the one and only Commissioner Summer Corn.
Yes.
I'm gonna go up and get down there.
Oh, you're fine.
Then I can look you all in the eye.
Should we, should we go down there and you stay up here?
No, no, stay where you are.
Stay where we are. Sees you to sleep up there.
Comfortable chair.
Well, this is always fun to be the, you know, the obstacle to getting out of a meeting early.
Right.
And being able to go home and watch something else. Percy Jackson or something.
Pull the microphone up so we can hear you.
I'm gonna probably wander around, which may make it. I'll try to stay as close as I can to it. I assume you're all aware that state code requires that planning commission members have four, four hours of training annually. And that one, that one of those four hours is to be on the basics of land use, or basically land use 101, as a lot of us like to call it. So Melinda called and talked to me last week and said, maybe that's what we ought to do, is we ought to have an hour of basic training for.
If I might interject, I think Paul needs it the most.
Yeah. You can, you can sit there, Paul. I'm gonna be down here. Just move my jacket.
I'm not needed. I'll just go home.
No, no, no.
There's only chairs.
Just sit where I'll sit.
Oh, we're missing a chair?
No, yeah, there's a, it's short a chair. I'm not sitting up here, so Paul can easily think.
Guys, get this one down.
And then we'll move this one up.
Sure.
So, we'll try to run through this. But by all means, feel free to make comments, ask questions, see whatever you think might be beneficial and useful to you. And we'll just kind of go over what, what some of the basics of land use are, and land use planning and regulations in the state of Utah, and basically how it works. Before I start, any questions or comments? Probably don't have anything you wanna know to ask about right now? Okay, let's see. First thing we gotta figure out is how to make the slides advance. Hey, Melinda?
Or I can just.
We're done with the training. Is it not working?
No, but I wonder if it's, oh, I guess it's not on, probably.
Oh.
Not. But that's the issue. Nope, still not on.
It's the grim ones.
With my glasses? Or just that I'm getting old?
Is your husband a woman?
It's all right. Well, basically, the, the whole structure of how land use regulation works is, comes from U.S. state code. We have the rules and the laws that were embodied. Regional laws were first adopted for land use for cities in the 1920s, and counties in the 1940s. They've been modified substantially over that period of time. Since then, in the 1990s, it was substantially modified and became what's called the Land Use Development and Management Act, which is what the, the section of the code is called now, or the LUDMA, as many people call it by its acronym. And that has been amended many times by the legislature since.
And will be again.
And is being again. It's, the code is becoming huge and unwieldy and ununderstandable, incomprehensible. That's my editorial comment with regard to it. But it's really getting to be quite the deal. But it really sets out the rules and the procedures and the way land use regulation works. And we'll cover some of the basics, not the details so much, because the details will kill you. They kill me, and I'm a professional planner. I have to tell you, there are parts of that code now that I look at and I read it and I go, what the heck did that just say? And I'm not sure I could quite get all of it and understand it. But we'll go over the basics that'll be a little bit easier to comprehend. Okay.
Still not working?
No.
Maybe you're too... Oh, I, I think it's because I flipped off the screen again.
Oh, I think that's the issue. Yeah, apparently. Yeah, all right.
No more double testing.
Generally, the land use process kind of works this way. A community decides what it wants to be, and it does that through the definition or the creation of its general plan. Some of you were involved in the recent update of the general plan here for Kaseville City and got a little bit of a taste about that process and how that works. But that is the aspirational part. That's the part that says, this is what we think the city ought to be, and the community ought to be, and how it ought to work. Once you've done that, then you enact the plan. And the way you enact it is by putting in place all of the ordinances and the rules and the policies that will then govern, or at least guide future development in the community. Steve?
So rumor has it that legislature would like to make general plans more prescriptive.
There's been that discussion.
Is that still in play, like, like in Calif, like in California? Where California is, if you have a general plan, you have to abide by what's zoned in that zone?
Yeah. It's still, it's, it's under discussion. It had been discussed, it's still being discussed. Nothing along those lines should come up in this legislative session with regard to that.
Okay.
And we'll talk a little bit more what Steve's talking about here in a minute, or a few minutes when we get to that part of it, where we talk about how the general plan works and what its application is. But you enact all of the things that you envision for your community in the general plan. You enact those through the ordinances, your zoning code, your zoning map, your subdivision code, various other regulations that govern and guide development in your community. And hopefully, that will cause your community to become what your general plan says it ought to be, or wants to be. Once that's in place, then as new development is proposed in your community, people make applications for that. Those are reviewed to either see that they are in compliance, or bring them into compliance with those new policies and ordinances that you have adopted. And then the permits are issued, and the development proceeds. And hopefully, it'll turn your community into what you want. And that's essentially, that's the skeleton, the outline of how that planning, that land use process and the planning process works. State code also designates the bodies by which this all happens. The council, of course, is key. Planning commission is required and helps to formulate and guide what happens in a community. The code also designates what are called land use authorities, or a land use authority, which is an administrative body that we'll talk about, which helps implement the rules and regulations that you have put into place. And then each community is also required to have an appeal authority to handle those situations or instances where there's some dispute that arises over what applicants are being required to do, based on your codes and ordinances and the permits that they have been applying for. And Kaseville has all of those, as every community must. What basically happens, there are two main processes that every community uses in its land use process. There's the legislative aspect and the administrative aspect. There is actually a third one that we call quasi-judicial, but that only applies generally in the appeals process. And we'll talk about that a little bit. But generally, Melinda, do we still have in our code that the planning commission acts as an appeal body for anything? Varian, do we still have the variances coming here? Or did we change that?
So oddly, variances, we would just follow state code.
Yeah.
We don't have a defined process for variances in Title 17. It's in Title 18, which it shouldn't be. That's, anyway, so we would just follow state code on a variance.
Okay.
But with the appeals, we went with administrative law judge, yeah, hearing officer.
Right. All right. So primarily, the, the processes that you, as a planning commission, will be involved with are the legislative and the administrative processes. And each of those operates under very different rules and circumstances, and we'll talk about those. And it's, it's a tough thing for, a lot of times, the citizens and even for members of the body to understand the difference, and why there is a difference. But we'll talk about those, and hopefully, we can help educate the public as well. Legislative actions, these are the types of things that relate to the adoption of policies and the rules to implement that policy. These decisions are political, more political than they are legal. They're legal in, in terms of you have to follow a particular process in order to make them be valid. But the kinds of decisions that you make are really political kinds of decisions. That is, their, their opinion, their, the things that you think are good or what's best, Paul?
Subjective.
Yeah, subjective.
There's a subjective nature to them.
Yep, very much so. Much more so. If these kinds of things wind up going to the courts, the courts will generally give a broad deference to the communities, because the courts will, don't wanna be, and generally, don't see their role as being in a position of saying, this is what your policy should be. They're saying, you decide what your policy should be. And as long as you're not way outside of, out of bounds by clearly doing something that's illegal or inappropriate, they'll let those policy issues stand, because they're, it's up to you. It's your community. You get to decide how you want those things to work and, and operate. So the courts give broad discretion to those. They're only challengeable in the courts if there's clearly no public benefit at all, or if it tries to do something that's clearly illegal. And I, an example that I use a lot of times is probably something from many years ago. But if, if a community were to enact an ordinance that said, no people of color may live in this neighborhood, or reside in this zone. It's clearly outside constitution and court rulings, and therefore, would be struck down.
And some law going back to 1865.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But otherwise, the courts will give broad preference, or broad discretion to those. These types of decisions, when they're made, if the community members want to challenge them, they do it through the referendum process, not through an appeals process. So again, it's still a much more political process, and we'll talk about what that is. The kinds of things that are legislative actions that you'll deal with, the adoption or amendment of your general plan, because there you're trying to decide, what do we want this community to be? How do we want it to look? How do we want it to function? That's really a discretionary policy kind of opinion choice that you make. The adoption or the amendment of land use ordinances, that is adopting the rules and zonings and rezonings, that's adopting the rules for saying, this is how we're going to have things work in this community. Again, you have some, some boundaries there. There are some boundaries that have been put into place in state code that we have to conform to. But that's a discretionary process, once again, and something that is given broad reference, a broad deference to adopting those kinds of rules and deciding what those will be. Annexations of land is new land into your community, and the development standards that you adopt for your community. These are handled by the planning commission and the council. Both bodies are involved in this process, and this process also requires a public hearing to be held.
There's public input.
Public input. We'll talk about that, that public input. And state code requires one public hearing in front of the planning commission. That's all that's required. So it is required, but it's pretty much, it's a bare minimum standard. If you're gonna be doing a general plan, and we'll talk about this a little bit more, but if you're gonna be doing a general plan, you probably want to have more than one public hearing on that general plan. So we'll see what those are. Okay. Administrative items, these are, once you've adopted your general plan, and you've adopted your rules, your zoning code, and your zoning map, and where the zones are outlined, now you've adopted those, now someone comes in and wants to do something. They want to build something in your community, and they're applying for a permit. Now that throws them into this administrative action category. And that has a different set of rules that apply to it. These are the items that are being considered under the rules that you have adopted, that the community has adopted and established by ordinance. These decisions are more legal and technical, not political. Because at this point, we're not saying whether that's a good idea or not. We're saying, these are the rules that are in place. Do you comply with the rules? If these kinds of things go to the courts, the courts do a strict standard of review. There has to be substantial evidence for the action that you're taking, whether a proposed action complies or not. And there has to be some kind of evidence, substantial evidence, as it's called, that, that supports the decision that you have made. No public clamor. In other words, no opinion. These kinds of actions are technical in nature. You're looking at the application. You're looking for evidence that they comply with the rules that are in place. And whether people like it or not, whether you like it or not, doesn't matter anymore. The rules have been adopted and established, and that's what you need to comply with.
That's why, and I don't know, and I'm not as good as, as Paul, as Commissioner Allred is, and Wolf is. But when we go through and do an action, and have done in the past, typically Commissioner Allred or Commissioner Summer Corn will say, and this is supported by the following within city code, as done by staff, so that when this goes out for review, if it's ever challenged on the actions that we do here, then it substantively, our administrative actions are substantively, have that burden put underneath them. So there's that, the basis for the, why we're doing it is there. The staff report, code and ordinance, as well as, it's not just our opinion as to, this is a really good thing we should be doing. It's supported by Title 17, Section 52. It's supported by the staff report, which also backs that up. And then when we make that recommendation to the council. So there's a lot of this administrative action. That's why we sometimes belabor the point in that conversation to do, to say, that's why we're making it in our, in our motion to say those things. So that if it ever comes back to that, if we ever got challenged, it's in, it's in our motion to move that forward.
Think of this in a situation, imagine yourself being in a, in a little tiny community instead, where, you know, you may not have staff at all. And yet, you're the planning commission, and you're charged with looking at this application and deciding whether it complies with your rules and ordinances or not. That can be a tough deal, especially if you're not, it depends on how complex your rules are and what they require. But you're also not doing this on a regular, full-time basis. This is something, you know, you come together once in, one evening, maybe a month, or once every couple of weeks, and then you look over an application, and you're trying to decide, man, does this comply with our rules or not? And have to decide that. As communities begin to get a little bigger, there's more development, they begin to hire staff. Part of the role of staff is to do that work, to take a look at the application, to see that it complies with the rules and requirements. And they write up a report for you, because it's not staff's decision to make, it's your decision to make, if you're the land use authority. It's possible that staff could be designated as a land use authority. And they are now for subdivisions particularly, because of state code. But in that case, you're looking for that, you get a staff report. The staff report tells you why it complies, how it complies. So when you make your motion to approve, cite the staff report. Say, the staff report has outlined these things, it says, it complies with our rules. And here's all of the reasoning for that. Steve, were you gonna say something?
I was gonna comment. I mean, you talk about smaller communities. There's one in Southern Utah that shall go unnamed, that's getting a lot of development push, and was down there talking with the city manager. And they're in this, they're in the position, exactly what you're talking about, where it's just the city manager who is acting as the community development director, all these things. And they've had, they've had to really get sophisticated. Their ordinances are written, where it just says, the community shall, they don't have this Title 17, they don't have the, they don't have the title, they're not sophisticated. And they're getting this development pressure for subdivisions and for highway development and stuff. And it's interesting, because my, my friend of mine is helping do, do some stuff, and I've been helping him on the side. And we've been talking through this, well, how do you, how do you get them, how do you get a community that has no sophistication to become sophisticated? Because their planning commission has only been meeting once a quarter. And now they're having to meet every two weeks. And they don't have the ordinances to support, you know, their ordinances have been just a piece of paper saying, our ordinance allows for commercial highway. And it doesn't define what commercial highway is. There's no setbacks, there's nothing. And so it, it's been, it's been a challenge to go through and try and find ordinances they could just piggyback and use for their own. Because it's, it's the sophistication of a smaller community, where you just have a city manager, a mayor, and a council, and a planning commission. It, it's a lot of time for these communities.
Yeah, good point. Uh, let's see. If someone disagrees with the decision that's been made with regard to an administrative item, those items then go through an appeals process, almost kind of like a court, or like a mini court. As Melinda said, the city now uses a hearing, an appeals hearing officer, in order to hear the evidence, take a look at the information, and decide whether the rules are properly followed or not. And then after that, and every community is required to have that, it goes to what's called an appeal authority. In this case, the cities here uses a hearing officer. Other cities still use something that you may have heard before, a board of adjustment. That was something that was pretty common in codes a few years ago, but it's pretty much been phased out now, so that you have a more professionalization of it, and objectivity to it. And so they go through that process. And then if someone still disagrees after that appeals process, then those can be appealed to district court, where, where the evidence will be examined and decisions made. The kinds of things that are administrative actions that we generally deal with are things like building permits. Someone reviews the building permit to make sure that the structures that are the subject of the permit meet all of the zoning requirements, the yard setbacks, the heights, the characteristics of the buildings, or the other structures on the property, and other things. So that's an administrative action. Site planner views, conditional use permits, subdivision plaits, those are all administrative actions. They are handled by the land use authority. And state code does not require public hearings for administrative actions. They're not required. People always say, well, if they're not required, how come we're holding public hearings then on conditional use applications, or on subdivision plaits? You have, communities have the option to require it. They have forever. And it's kind of been tradition for a long time that you hear, hold hearings on just about anything that comes up. But over years, the experience has shown that public hearings on administrative items can be more detrimental than helpful.
Becomes confusing.
Because what does the public do when they come up at a hearing? They usually tell you whether they like something or not. They don't generally tell you whether it's legal or not, or how it complies or doesn't. They may, but not usually.
You may find that one engineer.
Yeah.
Who's gonna say, well, you've got this easement that is, you know, makes it out of compliance, but you're not gonna, I mean, that's the rare bird. Or an architect, or a landscape architect. I mean, you, you may find that individual who understands the code, and finds that one thing that puts the subdivision out of its rights. But that's rare. And usually, that's gonna be caught by staff before it even gets reviewed as a subdivision plant.
Yeah.
It should get caught in the survey. It should get caught in some other area, before it even comes to the commission.
So we'll talk a little bit about the details of that. The role of the city council, the role of the council is to adopt the general plan, any amendments to adopt the ordinances, zoning maps, and establish the zones for property, the official maps, which are usually set out what kind of improvements, development improvements, and engineering improvements should be made throughout the community. Official maps, generally, the main thing that they show are future streets and street right-of-ways. But they can show other things as well. The development standards that will be applied in the communities and any amendments to those. The council, of course, must also approve annexations of new property into the community. And the council also designates who the land use authorities are for all the various administrative items, and the appeal authority. And so that's their role within the process. The planning commission's role is to prepare and recommend the general plan, or any amendments to that plan. So the question I oftentimes get asked, well, who really is supposed to create the general plan? It's the planning commission. That's under state code, that's their duty. That's under state code, that's their duty and responsibility. Now, they may engage staff, consultants, and others to help them do that. But it's the planning commission's role and responsibility to prepare that general plan or any amendments to the general plan, and then recommend those on to the council. They also do the same with land use ordinances, with the zoning maps, official maps, and any amendments to those. So that's the role and duty or responsibility as it's outlined in the state code. Now, the planning commission may also be designated as a land use authority, but it doesn't have to be. But in most communities, at least for some things, most planning commissions are also designated as a land use authority, at least for some of the administrative processes. Conditional use is probably the most common one. Site planner views.
Subdivision.
Sub, well, it was subdivisions, and they still can be.
Yep.
Under the new state code.
Yep.
But the council's completely taken out of that role now.
And what's interesting though is that that two-week timeframe they put in there almost makes it.
Yeah.
I mean, you've got a two-week review where you've got to get comments back. I think, or three, yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, fifteen days. Yeah, but you've got fifteen business days. I mean, that, that timeframe doesn't elicit a lot of time to be able to get a meeting in.
Yeah, it really doesn't.
If you, if you're gonna get it done. So I think there's been some of these changes to streamline. I think they're good changes, but are they right?
When you're acting on an administrative item, you're not a planning commission anymore. You're a land use authority. And you operate under those administrative rules, rather than the other kinds of rules that you do when you're doing the things that the planning commission is charged to do. All right, we'll quickly go over.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I wasn't here to, when that general plan was coming to fruition, and I assume it took several years. But was that planning commission spurred by the planning commission? I mean, for that specific, in our community, was that planning commission driven? Or council driven, or?
Yes.
Well.
Council?
The process was started by a lot of discussion, by the planning commission, by the council, by others, saying, our general plan in Kaysville is really old and really outdated and doesn't really give us a lot of guidance. And we really need to update it. Everybody kind of agreed to that. In order to do that, the council had to appropriate money to do it. Because.
We hired.
General plans these days are complex enough that you need somebody to help you do it. Staff, if you have, if you've got a big enough staff, you can do them in-house. When I was at Salt Lake City, we generally did our general plan amendments in-house. I had a staff of twenty-three people at Salt Lake City. And we had an actual staff that that was their role, was called long-range planning. But a community the size of Kaysville's, Melinda does everything. Melinda and Dan, they do everything. And they generally are so overwhelmed with the day-to-day stuff, they certainly can help guide the process, but they probably don't have the time to actually do the legwork. So you need, there are a lot of consultants out there that will help do those general plans. And they're very experienced at it, and some of them are very good at it. Not all of them, but some of them. But in order to do that, you've got to have the money to do that. And so that means the council's got to give you some money. So that means the council has to be on board. And that was the case here. The council designated the money to do a general plan update, and then we went through the process. Our general plan update, the last one that we did, happened to fall during COVID, which lengthened out the process by longer than we all hoped it would take.
About eighteen months.
Yeah. And so, you know, it really depends on the community, the consultants, so on. General plan updates can be done relatively quickly, within, you know, a period of a few months if it's really pursued, but they can also take a long time, longer than they really should. Kaysville's took a moderate amount of time, and longer than we all thought it would. And a lot of that was due to COVID.
Yeah, and also I think we essentially were starting from scratch.
Yeah. We were, we were essentially creating a whole new plan. Because the old plan.
There was a lot of work.
It was, there was not a lot of worth to the old plan.
There were a lot of work, there wasn't a lot of value.
Yeah. So.
It really, I mean, it hardly even qualified as a general plan.
Yeah.
It said some good things.
Yeah, it did, it did, but it, it just really wasn't what it should be.
Right. So it's been through that process, and since that time, it's already had to have some changes and modifications made because Modern Income Housing Plan is now part of the general plan. It's one of the elements of the general plan. So that had to be amended into it, and some changes had to be made.
And now we have water use.
And then, and we've got several more things coming. Where state code is now requiring that we have a water plan that's part of the general plan. And that's to be done by the end of this year, is it, Melinda? I think, the end of twenty twenty-four?
It has to be in place in twenty twenty-five.
Maybe it is twenty twenty-five. But there's a water plan, there's, if you're, if, I don't think we're close to an airport, so we don't have to do the airport stuff.
AICUZ zone.
Yeah. And so, and there's more being talked about in the legislative for this session of other things to add to the general plan. Frankly, I mean, I'm a planner, and I, I think planning's a good idea, but we're starting to get so many things added to what's required for a general plan that it's gonna make them untenable. Because it's gonna, there's so much stuff that has to go into it, that's gonna be so technical. If you want to, if you want to blow your mind, go read the new state code with regard to the, to the water plan that's required. It's this long, and there is the detail of kind of stuff that you need to go get information on and provide in that plan.
It's an engineering, it's an engineering, engineer's dream.
It really is.
But the other one I was gonna say is, if you look at the AICUZ zone, just planning for Hill Air Force Base, which I had to be very familiar with for, for the NEPA reviews I did. I mean, that alone is a hundred and ninety pages.
Yeah.
And that's just, that just covers the area from the front, from that gate to the back gate for South Weaver and Layton. I mean, it's a hundred and ninety pages about where the planes land and take off and the sound of the zone there. I mean, and that's, that's, that's that. And then you have the one for North Salt Lake also, which is another a hundred and eighty pages. And these are, these are documents, if you have an airport within your boundaries, you've got to include now that in your plan.
Well, or be within five thousand feet.
Yeah.
Of an airport, so even if it's outside your city boundaries.
Ah, geez.
So, anyway, we digress, we're getting too detailed here. General plan's important, it's a big part of the community. Each municipality in the state code, it says, shall prepare and adopt a comprehensive, long-range general plan. You cannot do land use regulation in the state of Utah according to the state code until and unless you have a general plan in place. So you're required to have that. We talked about who prepares the plan. Staff helps, consultants help, but it's the planning commission's responsibility to prepare that plan. And then it's the legislative body, the council's responsibility, to adopt the plan and actually make it the policy of the community. They may make revisions to it, and they can adopt it, or they can reject it. They have those, those options. They are the ultimate deciders on whether that plan will be adopted or not. And that's their role in the whole process. Once you've adopted your plan, then you go about making the rules to make the plan happen. And that's, as we've already talked about, your zoning code, your zoning map, your subdivision, other land use regulations and development standards that you have in your community. It's just important to remember that in this process, the planning commission recommends the council adopts, okay? But, but it's required by state code. The council cannot make a change to the general plan. They cannot make a change to the land use codes and ordinances. They can't rezone property to another zone until they get a recommendation from the planning commission first. It's required by state code. So there's an important role and responsibility that the planning commission has here. The ultimate responsibility lies with the council, but the planning commission plays a very key and vital designated role in this whole process. Okay? Now, in these kinds of issues, development of your general plan particularly, and in your, the development of your codes and ordinances, involve the citizens. Because it's their community, and you're here to represent the citizens of the community. Involve them in that process. And when, when we say involve them, that means not just ask in their opinion, but also teach them a little bit about what all this stuff is, how it works, and what it might mean. And, and help them to understand a little bit about how things work in, in the land use and the development arena, so that they can get a better idea of maybe what good policies would be for the community. Those kinds of things take some time and some effort. They don't happen quickly. We do have the advantage nowadays of being able to go out on the internet, for example, and getting that done, or at least assisting with that. In-person meetings are very key, but during COVID, when we were doing ours during COVID, we had plans for several open houses for the citizens to come in. That whole thing got blown up during COVID. So instead, what we did was, we did a lot of stuff over social media and so on. And then we were able to piggyback on to a survey that was going to be done for the Parks and Recreation Plan, where we then asked a bunch of questions with regard to the general plan. And that pulled us in, what, several thousand responses, did it not, Melinda? Wasn't it, I don't remember how many, it was like quite a few.
Yeah, it was a thousand.
Yeah.
They surveyed a thousand.
So that was really helpful to get that information. And that kind of helped then, I think, craft and mold our general plan to something that was probably a little bit more representative of the community as a whole. So if people don't agree with those actions that the council ultimately takes, if they would, you know, some people think is, the answer to that is you take it to court. That's not the process that's outlined in the state code with regard to these kinds of actions, with a general plan, or with the rezoning of property, or a changing of your land use codes. The process is going to a referendum. That is, in a nutshell, certain number of citizens file a petition. They say they want to do this, they want to have this designated as a referendum. They have a period of time that they can go out and collect signatures. State code designates how many valid signatures that are required to collect. And then if they do, are successful in collecting that, then the item can be placed on a ballot and voted upon by the citizens in the community at the next general election.
Just make sure you get it into the clerk by five o'clock.
Yeah.
With the right number of signatures.
Of the deadline date, that's right.
On the deadline day.
Yeah. There was a whole big dispute in Morgan County about that, whether people made it by five o'clock or not. But that's the process. It's a political process, it's not a legal process. The legal process only comes in following the rules that's set up for it, but it's a political process. So we have had a lot of referendums on land use issues in the state of Utah over the last several years.
Yes.
Our good friend Paul over here was involved in a big one in the city of Holiday, with the redevelopment of the Cottonwood Mall property. That was, that was like, that was huge. And established some new rules about how referendums work or what they, what they mean. And so it's a big deal. And there are, there are several underway right now in various locations in the state.
Like I said, what's interesting about that one is you had Cottonwood Mall, at the same time you had Orem, doing two referendums.
Yeah, Orem was, yes.
Both of them involved Woodbury Corporation with different partners. Woodbury lost on the Cottonwood Mall, but won in the Orem on multifamily. And I think it was interesting because both of them had very dedicated citizens who went after it, but ultimately lost on one and won on the other. And in, when it came back to it, there's more multifamily going into Orem, and they thought because they won that, that referendum in, in Orem, they thought that they defeated them at all times. And it's like, people get an idea, you know, oh my gosh, with this referendum, we thought we defeated it, we had no more multifamily. They'd come back again and thought, now we have to do this all over again. And so, I mean, it's, it's been an interesting process to watch because you get these citizen groups that get very vocal about this.
Yeah, very much so. So, okay.
We just had another, and I think I'm remembering the details right, but the Elias Temple that was proposed in the Heber Valley. And citizens didn't want to see that in that location, some didn't. So they attempted a referendum, but I don't think they gathered enough signatures on that.
Okay, so that.
Yeah, so, you know, it seems like sometimes things that wouldn't be very controversial can end up being controversial.
Yeah, very much so. All right. Now, on administrative actions, let's cover that a little bit. Again, as we noted already earlier, administrative actions are covered by a land use authority. Land use authority can be a planning commission, it can be staff. It can be another body. The council designates who those land use authorities are for the various kinds of action. So essentially what happens on building permit reviews, it's usually designated to staff. The staff is the land use authority for checking, to make sure that building permits, the zoning requirements are being met. For conditional use permits, particularly here in the city of Kaysville, and many cities, the land use authority is often designated to be the planning commission and to handle that. But it's really up to the council to decide who they want that land use authority to be. And that, of course, the land use authority, or that process, administrative process, relates to applying your codes as they've been adopted to specific applications as they come through. The general plan, of course, sets the guide for that, but it's the, the actual ordinances themselves that, that set the tone. All right. What I've done here is I just wanted to say, put yourself in the position that if you're coming in, you want to apply for, let's say, a conditional use permit to do something in the city. The first thing you're gonna do, well, let's just say, you want to do something, you don't know whether you can do it or not. So first thing you want to do, take a look through all the city's codes and ordinances, see if it's something that's allowed. If it is, great, then move forward. If not, you may have to do some things differently. Take a look at the city's general plan, first of all. See if what you want to do and the location where you want to do it is something that will be supported by the general plan. If it is, then of course, check the zoning. But if it's not allowed by the zoning, but it is, called for in the general plan, then you're gonna have to ask for something. But most people think, all I have to do now is just go say to the council, hey, your general plan says I can do this, so change the zoning. You know, and that's where we get to this, don't they have to follow their plan? Utah is, one, is a state that has a rule in place that says that general plans are not mandatory. They're not required, not required to be followed. You are required to have one, but you're not required to follow it. They're advisory. And so a council can take a look at that and say, well, yeah, our plan does say that you can do what you want to do at that location, but maybe not right now, we just don't feel like it's ready, it's time for it. And so it's not required to be followed, which is interesting, which has a lot of people saying, then why do we do a plan? And the idea, of course, is to lay out what your aspirations are for the community. And this goes to the question, again, that Steve asked, or mentioned earlier. There has been some discussion in the last year or two about making general plans mandatory. In other words, you have to follow your general plan in a community once it's been adopted. There's a lot of resistance to that, partly because of the way things have been done in the past. But it also makes it really difficult because once you, once you have that rule in place and you adopt the plan, you better change all of your land use codes and zoning to match up with that plan, or else you're gonna likely be subject to some challenges on that pretty quickly. So there are some real issues that surround that. Now, having said all of that about general plans being advisory and not mandatory in the state of Utah, there is a portion of it that is mandatory. Modern Income Housing Plan. We are required, and we are to adopt a Modern Income Housing Plan that sets forth some strategies and some goals for modern income housing in the community. And every city is required to report back to the state every year about the steps and actions that they're taking to implement that. And if they don't show any implementation, then at this point, the city can be made not eligible for certain state funding.
Or be fined.
The type that goes with it.
Or we could be fined.
Or we, or that's right, or you'd also be subject to a fine. So having said that, about it not being mandatory, there are parts of it, mainly the Modern Income Housing Plan, that are mandatory if you don't want to pay a fine and would like to get some state funding for certain things.
Okay, so my question is, and in your opinion, how closely aligned is? how closely aligned is, are our codes, ordinances and zoning with our general plan? Do we have a fair amount of work to get it compatible?
I would say that not everything in the community aligns perfectly with our general plan. But as we get the requests for development, for development approvals, applications, Melinda's staff, they take a look at it and they come back and they say, you ought to approve this because this is consistent with our plan. And generally, pretty much, we have done that in the community, in the city.
So that's for like rezoning, if something needs to be rezoned, but it meets the general plan, we can, you know?
Yeah. Now, even if it didn't meet the general plan, you could still approve the rezoning. But you also have a pretty good basis for not approving the rezoning if it, if it's not consistent with the general plan. And pretty much, you know, Melinda and staff have been pretty good about saying whether something meets it. They generally work with the applicant to get them so that it does comply with the general plan. And the planning commission, I will say, has been pretty good about saying if it complies with the general plan, they'll recommend onto the council that they approve it. The council generally approves all of those, but I don't think they always have, or have they?
No, they haven't.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Which is, so one of the beauties of the planning commission is that it's, it's really supposed to be separate from political powers and you're all appointed, you're not voted in. You're accountable to the community, but in a different way than the city council is. And so that gives the planning commission, I feel like, a lot more autonomy to do what they feel like is the best for the community regardless of public opposition. And it just, it just frees up the commission, I think, to, to just have a better ability to react based on what the general plan says. Because sometimes the general plan supports something that the public doesn't. But yeah, we, and to your question about do our ordinances align with the general plan, some do, some don't, I would say. But, you know, one of the things that, we revised it about a year after I had been here, but we created in 2021, I believe, the mixed use zone. City never had a mixed use zone, but the general plan really was focusing on creating these mixed use areas. And so that was a good outcome of that general plan. Because obviously you can't have a mixed use development if you don't have a zoning code that stipulates that's allowed and that apply, you know, that applies all the regulations for that zone. So.
Yeah, that's a good example.
Yeah.
All right. Again, so let's, let's just assume that you're, you're all done through that process now. You comply with the zoning. If it, if you don't, as a development applicant, you will generally look at amending the plan, doing a rezone of the property or maybe changing the code so that you can do a development the way that you would like to do it. And that goes through that legislative process that we've already talked about. With the planning commission first, public hearing is held, the council ultimately decides what that is. And again, it's subject to a referendum if there are enough citizens there who, who don't like the decision the way it was made. All right, let's say now you're compliant with what the zoning and the land use codes allow for, so now you go through the application process. And that throws you into the administrative process. First thing is, of course, as you're, you're thinking about your project, you ought to take a look at the city's regulations and make sure you're designing your project so that it's consistent with what the, what the standards and requirements are of the community's development regulations. Once you have submitted an application, what's called a complete application, which has all of the stuff and information that the city requires, at that point, you become what's called vested. What that means is, is that even if the city now were to change their rules, change the zoning, change something about the code that would normally might require you then to do something with your development, if you had submitted a complete application and paid your fee before any of that happened, bingo, you get to go ahead with your project even if the city subsequently changes the rules, changes the zoning, changes the requirements after that point. Utah has a very, what's called a liberal vested rights rule. In some states, a project doesn't vest until really late in the process. Not too long ago, I was reading about a project back in a state in the eastern part of the country where a developer had applied for and was granted approval to build a five or six story building. He had framed it up to that five or six stories. In the meantime, there was a lot of movement on the part of the citizens who didn't like that idea. They prevailed upon the city. They changed their code to allow only up to four story buildings. They changed it. Bingo. The developer had to remove two stories off of the framing from that building. That would not happen in the state of Utah. Because once you submitted a complete application, you're vested even if the rules change afterwards. So that's, that's just something to be aware of, about how that vesting process works. You may hear that term occasionally, vesting. When are you vested and what is vesting and what does it mean?
I got a question.
Yeah, Dan.
So once they did do that and your vested ability or this change, are you now nonconforming?
Right, that's correct. You become a nonconforming. And that's a whole nother definition and set of rules that apply to those.
You become the R B.
On that same question though, what used to come up the last few years I was practicing planner was, we would, we were very careful to make a note in the file or on a building permit, a permanent record, that it was either a legal nonconforming or an illegal nonconforming because there are some illegal nonconforming buildings out there. And, you know, and you watch them like a hawk and you better be able to track them to know, because there's rules that if you now go to change, they may get, there's a gotcha provision if it's illegal or illegal. And some cities simply don't have the resources to go after the illegal ones. But that was certainly an issue for us to keep a file on the difference between those two. Yeah, good point. All right, land use applications are reviewed by a land use authority, which we've already talked about, designated for whatever process that you're in. That administrative, administrative action is checking for compliance with the rules that are in place. If the rules are met, the project is entitled to approval. That's both by court rulings and in state code, saying if you meet the rules, you're entitled to approval. It doesn't become a question of whether, yeah, well, but we just don't like it. That no longer plays into it. Now, if you, if, of course, once that happens, an applicant may decide, may say, hey, you know, I'm not real sure that what's being, what's being required of me is appropriate or something that we can do. Or you can say, what this really falls into. And this argues for why you should make your ordinances and codes as, as clear as you possibly can and as specific as you can. Try to avoid what I call waffle language in your codes. That is unclear or unspecified language. For example, one of the most common ones, and I've seen this throughout my career. We're seeing less and less of it now because of this, but is, here's a provision that I saw in many codes, especially early in my career, complies with the neighborhood character. That's a requirement. What the heck does that mean?
And what happens if the neighborhood changes?
Yeah.
Over time.
But it's completely subjective.
And subjective because.
It's really subjective, you know, and that's where, so, so the land use authority may say, well, yeah, okay. We think you have to do this and this to your project in order to make it comply with the character of the neighborhood. And the applicant says, holy cow, no. That's, that, first of all, it's going to add a lot of cost and I don't think it really adds, makes it better in the neighborhood. So in that kind of a case, you know, we'll talk about what the process for that is. But in order to avoid those kinds of situations, we as planners and attorneys have been advising communities for a long time, don't use waffle language. Be much more specific. Instead of saying complies with the character of the neighborhood, say, in this neighborhood, these are the characteristics, these are the features that define what the character of the neighborhood is. And then you can look and say, does it have this? Yes. Does it have this? Yes. Does it have this? No. It doesn't. Well, then it wouldn't comply with these characteristics that we've listed in our ordinance. The downside of that is your ordinance may get really long and complicated. But if you want to have some hope of achieving that, you're going to see those kinds of things more commonly in a historic preservation or a historic zone rather than in others. And now, as far as residential structures go in the state of Utah, we are prohibited from requiring design elements in our codes and ordinances for residential structures. That was a law that was put into place in, by the legislature a couple of years ago, so just something to be aware of.
Just for single family?
Single and two family.
Okay, so twin homes and single family.
But, but there are exceptions to that. There are, historic districts.
Conditional use, P U Ds, those kinds of things.
Development agreements.
Development agreements.
Yeah.
Right. But just a standard subdivision, yeah.
Yeah, right. So here's the issue with, with the waffle language. Let's say you had that language in there. The land use authority says, okay, this is what you got to do to be compliant with the character of the neighborhood. The applicant says, ah, no, I don't think so. There, there were a couple of court cases that were decided in the nineties with regard to this and that language has now been put into the state code. And it's basically what's called the plain, the plain language section. Says that a land use authority shall apply the plain language of land use regulations. If a land use regulation does not plainly restrict the application, then the land use authority shall interpret and apply the regulation to favor the land use applicant.
Yeah.
What the courts basically said and how this applies is, if you've got a requirement and the city says this and the applicant says this, and a neutral person can look at that and say, well, you both have good points. I mean, you know, I could see where it would go either way. If it's not clearly prohibited in order to allow that to happen, what the applicant wants to do, then what this section of the code says is you must allow it. So that's why we say even more so be specific in the language of your code or ordinance about what, what you are, standards you're setting and what you require. So that would go towards whether an, an application will be approved or not. Now let's say you've been approved by the land use authority, but you think that the land use authority is not doing something right. They're requiring something of your application or your development that you think is not in line with what the code or ordinance says. What do you do at that point? They've ruled, they've decided what, what it is. At that point, you have to go what's called the appeal process, which is you go to that appeal authority. You file an appeal. It goes to an appeal body. More and more communities now are using hearing officers rather than what used to be the boards of adjustment. And the reason for that is boards of adjustment were generally made up of citizens and citizens. I got to tell you, I saw this many times throughout my career. A board of adjustment made up of citizens in the neighborhood. When someone comes in on appeal and they go, oh, Fred, oh, yeah, I mean, we've known you for a long time. You've lived in, yeah, you're a good guy. Oh, it's okay. Let him do it. He's fine. You're from Chicago and you want to build that in our community? Nah, I don't think so. Things can get really subjective. And so more and more communities are now going towards having a hearing officer. Oftentimes someone who has some legal or professional training in order to get around that. Because when those kinds of matters are taken to the courts, as they then can be after the appeal hearing, they can quickly get overturned and cost the community some pretty good change, some pretty good money. So that's what's required if you disagree with the decision that was made. Now, the thing to be aware of, in an appeal hearing, you have to present evidence why you think the decision was wrong. How was, how is the decision not in conformance with what's required? And so you have to be clearly there being able to do that. But you have to be aware of one thing. The appeals process is not just available to the applicant. It's available to third parties as well. So the neighbors, the neighbors can file an appeal. It's not just the applicant that would go through this process. Again, the neighbors, the citizens, whoever files that appeal in that process, they have to do the same thing. They have to show where they think that the decision was wrong, how the rules were improperly applied. If they cannot show that, then the appeal should not go their way. That's fine. That's one thing. The problem with the, for the development community is going through that kind of a process takes time, takes more time. And oftentimes for development projects, time is money. And so that can be something that can really throw a wrench into the works of a project, just depending on how the whole situation is handled. And of course, if it goes to the courts, then it can really add a lot of time. And, you know, hopefully the judges will be quite versed on how to deal with these. Honestly, you never know when it goes to court.
Is there a number of citizens that can take it up?
A number that's required?
Yeah.
No, an individual, an individual citizen.
Almost, yes.
Yep.
And it's, I think it's defined as anyone who feels that they're aggrieved or impacted by the land use decision.
Yeah. And I will say now, with the hearing officers and so on, these decisions at the city level at least can usually be made fairly quickly. I think we had an appeal a while back and I think it got resolved fairly quickly, didn't it, Melinda?
Yeah, so I was going to mention that. We had an appeal, or well, we had a conditional use permit come before the planning commission in April or August or September of last year, I guess, actually now the year before, '22. And at any rate, actually the application came in as a rezone. And as I started looking at the code, I thought to myself, why is this a rezone? Because multifamily units are a conditional use in the zone. And so we switched the application from a rezone to a conditional use permit. And the backstory on that was the code was poorly written. And I think, I think it's a combination of things, right, it's probably written before some of these case laws and state laws changed. But it was unclear and ambiguous. And so myself and the city attorney, we looked at it and we felt like we should rule in favor of the applicant. So that came to the planning commission as a conditional use permit instead of the rezone. We ended up actually having two appeals from that application. The neighbors appealed essentially our interpretation of the code that said the, the multifamily is allowed as a conditional use. And the applicant appealed as well because the planning commission during the meeting set conditions that were not legal. And so it was, it was a very interesting process. But the, I think the planning commission meeting took place in September. The appeal wasn't finalized until December, but part of that was because we didn't have an administrative law judge appointed. And so we had to take a few weeks to get an ALJ appointed. But it's very, very interesting and, you know, one of the things that's hard from a staff perspective is that land use is very complex. It's very layered and, and it's always changing as well. But a lot of what we do as a city or staff upsets the community. And without that kind of detailed knowledge of, you know, here's, here's how things work, people just kind of assume that, oh, the city always favors the developers. City staff always just, you know, sides with developers. Well, it's not us choosing that. It's the laws that stipulate. And sometimes a developer is just a person, right? I mean, if you're developing property, whether you're Symphony Homes or a family that just wants to subdivide their property, right, you're still acting as a developer. But that's something that, that really, I think, creates a lot of conflict out in the public unnecessarily just because, right, that knowledge of this is the way, the case laws and state laws require us to react. just because, right, that knowledge of this is the way, the case laws and state laws require us to react is just not very widely known.
Now here's something you might find of interest. I talked about that the applicant can appeal, citizens, neighbors can appeal. This happened when I was at Salt Lake City and we still had a board of adjustment at that point, made up of citizens. And the board made a decision that many of us in kind of more the professional realm of things thought that was not a right decision. That, that did not fit with, with the facts of the application and how things went. Can the city appeal their own board of adjustment? Dang right, they can. And we had that happen. Where we talked to the mayor's office, the mayor's office said, yeah, I think you're right. So the mayor's office appealed the board of adjustment decision and succeeded in the appeal process. But it's, it's interesting stuff, interesting stuff, just how this can all work.
If I can just add a little bit more. So first of all, the outcome of that appeal, because I don't think, some of you weren't on the commission when that happened, but I'd be happy to send that out. In fact, I sent it to Commissioner Seavey last week or the week before. But we, the ALJ that we chose to contract with is the former Utah Property Rights Embudsman. So nobody knows land use law better than he does. He agreed with our decision of it was a conditional use. He agreed that the language was not plain and that we should have ruled in favor of the applicant. One of the things that was really difficult, as the city attorney and I looked at the second appeal from the applicant who had these conditions applied that were illegal based on our code, is we needed to submit some type of a written statement to the ALJ saying, you know, here's what happened. And we didn't want to find ourselves at odds with our planning commission. I mean, as staff, if we're saying like, the planning commission really messed up and they got this wrong. And so with the appeal on whether or not the conditional use item was allowed, we did write a statement. But with the appeal of the planning commission's conditions that were imposed, we felt like it was better off to maintain a more neutral position with that. And the ALJ did come back and ruled that two of the conditions the commission had set were not legal. We also had the flexibility in our code to just have him be the authority or the end result on that. We didn't have to bring it back to planning commission. But a lot of times, if that was done incorrectly, they won't say, here's what you should have done. They just say, go back and do it again and do it right. So it was, you know, given the length of time that we had to get that ALJ on board, we felt like it was more appropriate to just let him rule the final conditions and not prolong the application even longer by bringing it back to the planning commission.
Okay. Now, let's talk about, just briefly, public hearings for administrative items. We've already talked about this a little bit, so we won't spend a lot of time on it. But state code does not require public hearings for administrative items. We talked about why. Citizens generally, when they come to a public hearing, they want to tell you what they think. They generally don't tell you factual information that will apply to the application and whether it complies with the code or ordinances. When they do, oftentimes what they, let's say for example, that your, your development standards say that it cannot negatively impact traffic on an adjacent street. Now, again, that's one of those really general standards. It really ought to be more specific in the standard there of what you put in your code or ordinance. Because that becomes kind of subjective. Of course, it's going to negatively impact traffic because you're adding traffic. But is it enough to really cause a problem or not? And that'll oftentimes take some kind of an engineering evaluation to determine that for you. But as I have always said, and I'm going to get in trouble because this is going to be recorded, but when you have citizen hearing, there are three things that always come up. Every public hearing that I'm involved with. It's going to increase traffic. It's going to lower my property value.
It's going to kill my kids.
It's going to kill kids.
Yep.
Yep.
They come up all the time. Is there any factual basis to any of those claims? And usually there isn't. But those are opinions that people will give you. And it would take a fair amount of work and information to really back up if there's any truth to those assertions.
And to interject, I mean, the hard thing here is when, when, when they come, when you have a citizen who says, you know, okay, so you're going to increase traffic, you're going to kill kids. Okay, granted, tragedy happens in community all the time. But really, when you go look at the accident reports or go and bring that in, it weighs nothing in our decision-making. I mean, that, that whole is a public works issue. That is an engineering issue. Those issues are decided in different form for us. I mean, ours is a land use decision. We, that, that really doesn't play into the decision.
Yeah, it depends on how your, what your code or ordinance says with regard to what to look at.
I mean, environmental, if, if we had an environmental rule in here and it said you had to, I've dealt with this in other states where it says, you know, you have to have, and it becomes very clear, you know, there's an environmental piece to it and it says you have to comply with that. Yeah, I could see if we put that in there, yeah, you have to have a traffic study. Then yes, we, we have to comply with that or it has to have an environmental review. Those pieces then become relevant and cogent. But oftentimes, we hear this, we hear, we have this, we, I mean, my favorite was the neighbor who brought her child in the wheelchair, who had said, my kid plays in the street. By adding the subdivision, you're going to kill my kid. I mean, we've had that here in Kansville. And it's like, that's great, don't let your kid play in the street in his wheelchair. I mean, you know, but it's that emotional argument.
It is the emotion.
And it's, but adding, adding 25 car trips to your neighborhood is not going to kill more children.
Yeah. Now, it's not always true. There are occasions on which you will get some information that may be useful in helping you weigh on whether an application meets the requirements of your code or ordinance, code and ordinance or not. But there may be other ways of submitting that information and getting it evaluated where it needs to be evaluated. But we have some pretty good standards that have been set at the state level. Couple of court cases that have been decided where administrative decisions were made by a community, in one case Clearfield City and another case Cache County, that was based on the comments made from residents. And you can see there the quotes from, directly from the court cases. "The opposition of neighbors is not one of the considerations to be taken into account when determining whether to issue a development permit. The consent of neighboring landowners may not be made a criterion for the issuance or denial of a conditional use permit." I was the planner on the Davis County versus Clearfield City case. So I have direct experience with it. This is where the term, have you all heard of the term public clamor? It came out of this court case. So I'm famous by association with the fact that I was involved in the public clamor case. In that particular case, we had Davis County Mental Health, as it was called at the time, was proposing to put two mental health treatment facilities, alcohol rehabilitation and mental health facilities, two of them, in Clearfield City, on the main street, but fairly close, almost adjacent, they're just, I think, a house or two apart from each other. The city's ordinance said that those kinds of facilities could be allowed as conditional uses. When the, and, and it required that a hearing be held on those conditional use applications. When that hearing was held, it looked like this, like this photograph, probably even worse. And it was, it was overwhelming. And the planning commission chair at the meeting even at one point said, who here is in favor of this application? One hand went up and that was the person from Davis County Mental Health that was there representing it. Then the question was, who here is opposed to this? And I mean, the room just erupted. People, you know, yeah, we're opposed. And I mean, it was just terrible. A lot of the assertions that were made, one of the assertions, where a lot of different things were made. But one of them was that in neighborhoods where those kinds of facilities are located, crime increases. Crime becomes a bigger problem. There was no evidence presented that that was the case. It was just kind of presented as, everybody knows this, it's just a fact. Because of the nature of the meeting and the crowd size, the police chief was at the meeting with a couple of his officers to help keep order. The chair, the planning commission chair, saw the chief there and he finally said, chief, would you come up here? And he said, is it true? Do these neighborhoods where these kinds of facilities are located, do they generally experience more crime? And the chief said, he said, no, he said, our experience has been where those facilities are well managed and well operated, there's no increase in crime in the neighborhood. Okay, very much. The hearing went on, a lot of stuff. When the motion was made to deny the conditional use permit and the reasons for which it was being denied, one of them was the neighbors don't want it. And that's where you get this kind of stuff from the courts, saying that's not a valid criterion for an administrative item. But another one that, that they cited was crime will increase in the neighborhood. They had just had the chief up there saying it doesn't. Had a lot of citizens saying it would. Who was more credible in that statement? Well, the chief probably would have had some direct experience with that. And so as another part of this is where, when you're making administrative decisions, you must have some evidence, some credible evidence for the decision that you're making. And so in that case, the courts would say, there was no credible evidence to say that that was a criterion on which to deny the application. So it's very much all about the facts, the application to the facts and the criterion, the evidence that you see for whether you approve it or deny it. But you have to have something to hang your hat on. And that's, that's called substantial evidence. Substantial evidence doesn't mean it's clear and convincing or it's overwhelming. What it means is there's something credible there that you can hang your hat on. In that case that I just cited in Clearfield, there was credible evidence from the police chief. The police chief was an expert, would have some background in that. You could hang your hat on that and say, yeah, we approve it because there's not going to be an increase in crime because we had this testimony from, from an expert. What happens when you get, this, I've seen this happen before too. Let's say you get a convenience store that's being proposed on the corner of a neighborhood and the citizens are all opposed because you don't want a convenience store. But one of the criterion is that it does not negatively impact traffic on the adjacent streets. The applicant presents a study by a traffic engineer that shows, yeah, it's going to increase the traffic some, but not to the detriment of the level of service on the street. So it's not a negative impact, so to speak. The citizens have pooled their resources together, they've gone out, they've hired their own engineer. That engineer comes in and says, oh, we have, we've done a study here and we think it will negatively impact the level of service on that street. What do you do in that case? Take a guess. What do you, what do you do in that case? Let's say you're the planning commission, as you are now, or the land use authority in this case, and you get that. What do you do?
Well, the question is, have they provided you with their data?
Yes.
It sounds like, though if it's unclear, it leans towards the applicant. Is that correct?
That's perhaps one good way to look at it. What the, the rule of substantial evidence says, that you just have something to hang your hat on, right? Okay, I've got a study here that says it's not going to increase traffic to a detrimental level. Yeah, there's one over here that says that it is, but I'm going to rely on the one that says it's not. You hang your hat on that one, the courts will accept that. They'll say, you've got credible evidence from an expert.
It's the same thing, so it's the same thing when they, when we hear all the time, you're going to lower property values. And you, people say, so, but it's, you have maybe, and you hear what you're putting in townhomes, you're going to lower my property values. When they do appraisal, the appraisals are not done against dissimilar properties. And so you're not going to be, you're not lowering anybody's property value, a single family, because they're not valuing a property, a townhome or a commercial property against a single family. So that's the other one you can use and say, look, you know, within the appraisal, they're not appraising your property. So there's no way that a single family is going to be taken down. I mean, that's, that's the other, you know, you can hang all that credible evidence. I've seen, I've seen a planning commission do that.
Yeah. So what do we do about this issue of how, holding public hearings for administrative items?
Don't hold them.
Yeah, I mean, one of the, the obvious answer is just to say, don't hold, don't have them. That's probably, I mean, that's fine and that's probably the better course of action to take. But politically, it can get you into trouble. The citizens in the neighborhood are not real happy with that either. There's a couple of options that I see as, as a good approach or a better approach. One is to maybe change the character, the nature of the kind of hearing that you hold. It's not just a free-for-all, open, public hearing. The state of North Carolina and a few other states have what they call administrative hearings, which basically says, okay, you are allowed to speak here at this hearing if you're presenting credible evidence. If you're allowing in, if you're presenting information that you have some backup information for. And so then when a, when a citizen gets up and says, well, I just don't like this, I think it's going to increase traffic. The question is, what's your evidence? And if there is no evidence, you know, there's no basis for accepting that. That's one option. Another option is, as we just talked about, the state of Montana in last year's legislative session passed a new, they called it the new land use code or the land use bill for the state of Montana. And one of the things that it said, it required was that in the administrat, or in the, in the legislative process items, general plan, adoption of your codes and ordinances, zoning of property, it did require a lot more public input. It said you have to have public involvement and a lot more public involvement than just one hearing, like Utah's law and many other state laws require. But it also then said, for administrative hearings, no public hearings are allowed. It just cut them off. It said, those hearings are going to be taking place at the legislative level, not at the administrative level. Now, another way to deal with this is to, again, still post notices like we oftentimes do if there's a conditional use permit and then have the information on there that says, if you have questions or information, submit it to the staff, submit it to the city, and the staff can evaluate it. And perhaps even talk with those folks and say, look, you know, we get that you don't like it, but here's the situation. It's an administrative item. If they meet the requirements, and if you think they don't meet the requirements, you have to present some evidence to show that. And, and that kind of takes the emotion out of it, at least in the meeting, in the form of the meeting itself. So just some ideas and some thoughts to think about on that. Paul?
Another one, you know, I had that come up before, more than once, where traffic was used as an issue and it created a real conflict for the planning commission. And so what the planning commission did, said, well, okay, we're going to continue this item and we're going to allow the applicant to come up with their own separate study based on the information that's been submitted. And so what happened was we had two traffic engineers, dueling traffic engineers, and one was basically hired to review the other one and come up with independent conclusions. And it really helped settle the matter because what it did was it pushed them into a situation where it was more or less a binding arbitration that based on the expert that came in second was able to provide evidence that the first expert wasn't using the latest best information. And it won the day for the applicant, i.e. and/or the city. Because, you know, they, I think the neighbors tried to make the city look bad by saying, well, you haven't done, you haven't studied this enough, city, you're just giving a, you're just saying yes to everything. Well, so that's another solution to say, okay, well, we'll just take a little more time and we'll allow the applicant to come back with, you know, competing evidence.
Yeah.
And it worked pretty well.
One of the, to me, one of the big arguments or the big points of, of not having hearings for administrative items is what happens when you do have them? Citizens will come in, they'll say what they're going to say, all the things that we've talked about. And then when they're done and they sit down and then you, us, as a planning commission or a body, say, well, okay, thanks a lot for your comments and your... or a body, say, "Well, okay, thanks a lot for your comments and your input. We're ready now. We're going to take a motion to approve this application because it meets all of the requirements of the code ordinance." What are the citizens out there saying? Those dirty buggers, they never listen to a thing we said. They had their minds made up before they, we even came in here tonight. And it destroys their faith in the process.
Yeah.
Partly because they don't understand what the process is.
And I say that before, I mean, you come to administrative, you come to a hearing where we have an administrative plat, and we can't do anything. We've got to act. And they, you come up, and they expect you to do something, and we can't. It's not a legislative item.
Yeah.
And I think, I think that, that's some of the frustration I felt, that, you know, by moving it over to the staff, it, you know, and moving it out, we wouldn't have as frustrated a citizenry who's coming in saying, you know, "We don't want X, Y, Z project just for a plat." Well, great, we hear you, but, you know, that's a whole different process.
Yeah.
And here's a real danger to the administrative hearings, public hearings is. To give you a good example of it, as staff, we approached our city council and said, "These administrative hearings have some real negative impacts. They provide one perceived public benefit, and that is, you as a city are telling the residents, 'We value your input,' but you're telling the opposite if you invite them out, and their input doesn't have the ability to stop or kill the project." And so, the residents resent you for inviting them out, and then they say, "Well, you wasted my time."
Right.
And they'll say, "Well, why are we having a hearing?" Because, and we'd say, "Well, because the city's position is, even if you're opposed, we'd rather have you know what's coming instead of not knowing what's coming." And so, you choose, you pick which poison. You pick. Would you rather not know anything and just have a building or a subdivision going next to you, or would you have the ability to come out and express concerns and have the city say, "Well, we, we're obligated to permit it anyway?" And so, you know, we went, we went to our council and said, "We've got to give some real strong consideration to doing away with these hearings because of the mistrust that they create, and instead do as many of the approvals as we could as an administrative act at the counter with the staff." In other words, the staff could sign off if it meets the ordinance. And so, cities are still struggling with that.
Oh, absolutely.
And the, and the time and cost of hearings. There's, there's a cost element. There's employee costs, there's mailing, time. There's a good argument to be made for not having them.
Yeah. So, the argument is not to keep the citizens unaware and out of the process, but to appropriately involve them, and have them to understand appropriately under the law what it is that can and can't be done. So, Dan?
Yeah, I think one of the problems, like that Clearfield example you used, is the citizens don't realize that a conditional use is a permitted use. It just has conditions that may be discussed or whatever, that somebody missed or something that are in ordinance. And I think that's the biggest problem with probably that Clearfield thing, is they didn't realize when they come in, it is a permitted use. There just might be, be a condition placed on it.
Yeah. Most citizens don't know that. So, all right, there are other things, but I think we'll skip them. But there are other things. You have engineering standards in the community that development needs to follow, exactions and impact fees that you're allowed to impose upon development in order to help pay for public improvements, that become part of the cost of development, but then also are an enhancement and benefit to the community. Development agreements and how those work, you all have experienced that a little bit. And then allowing for bonding, which is allowing for money to be put up by the applicant, by the developer, so that they can then go ahead and begin to sell units or parts of the project, or do all, do other things in there, without having completed all of the required improvements yet. And so, they're allowed to bond for that, and there's a lot of processes and rules that go on that. You go through all of that, get through that whole slug of things, now you can build your project. So, that's essentially land use 101. And we did it not too quick, did we?
No, we're good.
Sounds good. Really good.
Okay, with that, I am done. Unless you all have questions or comments or anything, but we'll turn it back to Melinda.
Thank you. Great job. Well, thank you to Wilf for doing that. I, I talked to him earlier today, and I think I'll just let you do it, which kind of makes me feel like I'm shirking my responsibility, but I sure appreciate his expertise and knowledge and willingness. So, with that, we can go on with the agenda.
Approval of the meeting minutes from January 25th, 2024. Everybody had time to look through those? If so, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll just do it by one vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then, other matters, reports, correspondence and calendar. Turn it over to Melinda.
Yeah, I'll just report on a few things. So, I did send out information this week about a couple of training opportunities that are coming up. So, if something you're interested in and can accommodate with your schedule, let us know. The one, one is down in St. George with the Utah Land Use Institute, and the other one is in Cedar City in May with the Utah Chapter of the APA, the American Planning Association. So, a couple other things, just, we have been working, actually started on this before I started, so it's been over two years, but staff has been working on trying to get a community reinvestment area created for the city center area that has been identified in the general plan. We presented that plan to the county commission in a work session, I think it was last week, and that went well. So, we'll be moving forward with hopefully executing in our local agreements between the county, the school district, the other taxing entities, and that'll be something that really could help transform our Main Street and 200 North area into what the general plan is hoping it could become. So, stay tuned for more information on that. I hope in a couple months, we'll be done with that process and have everything all approved. And then, I just wanted to report on, there's been, I'm sure if any of you are on social media, you may have seen some comments and concerns about potentially locating a homeless shelter here in Kaysville. So, the, nothing has been determined as to where a homeless shelter would go in Davis County. State laws that were passed last year, and then they're looking at amending the bill this year, is requiring all of the Class II counties to come up with sheltering opportunities for those who do not have shelters. So, a task force has been created here in Davis County. They've been working on this for quite a few months. The mayor has been on that task force, and one of the things that the county was looking at, or, they were looking at the emissions building over here off of, that's, 600 West, is that 600 West? And, and so, that, you know, was something that they wanted to consider because they own the property. The bill language from last year, as it's currently written, was, says that you have to come up with a temporary code blue shelter. So, if the temperatures drop below 15 degrees, you have to be able to provide a location for people to shelter. And, and then you also have to come up with a long-term plan for a shelter if you don't have one. And so, one of the things that they are looking at, hoping to amend that bill, is to, if there is a long-term plan in place that the county identifies, to not have to have that interim code blue shelter, because there would be some expenses of trying to renovate a location and bring it up to code to be able to house people. And so, hopefully that change in the bill goes through, and then essentially, that would just alleviate that shorter-term need and have the allowance then for the county to look at long-term solutions and pour all the funding and money into a long-term solution versus putting some into a location that's only meant to be temporary. So, the mayor is really on top of this, and in the end, I think that what will happen is that we'll just be looking at those long-term plans. And there is a lot of things to consider about when you select a site for a homeless shelter. And given those considerations, such as being around services that they would need, being around transit, having healthcare opportunities, and, you know, places to go during the day when they're not in a shelter. And really, the location that we have here isn't suitable for most of those things, primarily the services. And so, I think when you consider long-term, selecting a site that really is amenable to surveying the population that you're trying to serve, I don't feel like this would be a good location. That's kind of been a message that the mayor and council have been saying. But, in the end, the way the state laws are written, at least with the temporary shelter, we wouldn't be able to say no. So, that's, I mean, going back to kind of some of these things we just learned about, right? And you can imagine why the state put that in the, in the statute, because I think most people would come out and oppose a homeless shelter in their community. And so, what happens when everyone opposes it? Well, no one gets the help that they need. You don't get a shelter located in the right location, or maybe even anywhere. So, the city, last week, I believe, put out some information on our city Facebook page that corrected some of the inaccuracies, inaccuracies that have been out there in regards to this. So, we truly appreciate when the public does come to us and ask questions, because a lot of times, as that gets filtered through layers and layers out in the public, it just becomes unfactual. And so, if there are any questions on that, feel free to reach out to me, but that's also just kind of a stay tuned and see. So, I don't think I have anything else. Dan, do you have anything?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay. And actually, considering that, I, we, we would, I know right now, for our next meeting on the 20, is it the 25th, we won't have any legislative items, because we have not posted any public hearings for a rezone or a text amendment. So, we may not have the need for that meeting. If we get a conditional use permit, and then we'll hold a meeting, but other than that, we may not. And then, either way, I won't be here. I hope to be in a national park, maybe Joshua Tree or Death Valley. So, I will not be here. Yeah.
Yeah. I saw pictures out of Death Valley.
Oh, yeah. I mean, after last year and now this year.
Well, no, it's like, they got like four inches of rain.
Yeah, in fact, there's, I mean, this is total side note, but Death Valley, and I was there in 2018, and it surpassed any, I had low expectations admittedly, but it surpassed my expectations infinitely. If you ever get a chance, you should go. But, Badwater Basin within Death Valley National Park is the lowest point in the continental U.S. It's like almost 300 feet below sea level. And it used to just be a lake, but right now, actually, there is water in Badwater Basin, which is something that really kind of happens once in a lifetime. And some of that is due to the hurricane that came through last year. I think right now, there's only a couple of inches left, but that's, that's an opportunity to not pass up. And I'm wondering, even with all of these storms that they've had over the last few weeks, that there may be more water now.
I know it snowed, because I have a friend who just drove down through there, and he said there was snow on the peaks into Death Valley.
Oh, wow.
And then they, they'd gotten substantial rain before that.
Yeah. So, it's definitely a treasure if you ever get a chance to be out in the middle of nowhere, between Las Vegas and Los Angeles.
Like Searchlight?
Yeah. Needles. So, that's all I have. Thank you for being here. We'll note, all of you that were here tonight for the training, and make sure you get credit for that. And then, we'll, we'll also send the video to our two alternate planning commissioners that can watch and get credit for this time as well.
Okay. I have a motion for adjournment.
So, moved?
Let's go.
Melinda, thank you for sending the stuff out.